You could remain standing and we'd ask councillor Egli to introduce our special guest who will sing O Canada.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. This morning, we have Darcy Watson-Laird, no relation to your worship. And Darcy, today, in a sense, is shared between myself and councillor Cadre. Councillor Cadre's ward is where Darcy lives, but she is a student at Maryville High School in my ward, or as we like to call it Canterbury West. Darcy is very involved in the school. She's part of the steel drum performances that you see at the Senators' Games every year. She was also part of the cast of Singing in the Rain, Spam a Lot, Catch Me If You Can. She's also worked in marketing and public relations for the Maryville Theatre Productions, and she's looking forward to being involved in the 2018 musical production of Disenchanted this spring. So I am going to turn the microphone over to Darcy to lead us in the National Anthem.
(Singing) O Canada, our home and native land, true patriot love in all thy sons command. (Singing) Cauton bras et portes les bœufs, il se porte la croix. Ton histoire est une époque des plus brillantes exploits. God, keep our land glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.[174.12][174.12](Applause)
Well, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Before we start with our Mayor's City Builder Award, one of our colleagues and his spouse, Li, had some great news a week or so ago when they delivered a brand-new baby boy, Jacob, to our happy father, Mathieu, and mother, Li, who is right over there. A little lunch break for Jacob.[244.65][244.65](Laughter) So I won't call you up at this awkward moment.[248.01][248.01](Laughter) But I will ask Matt to come forward. We have a little presentation we'd like to present you. We have a population sign that says 900,001.[261.14][261.14](Laughter) So congratulations.[263.33][263.33](Applause)
Thank you. I appreciate that.
The plan was to have Li here, but we'll present that to you as well a little later. It's an honour now for us to present the Mayor's City Builder Award, and I'd ask Alan and Judy Graham to the podium. And thank you for bringing some family and friends with you. Come on up here, Alan and Judy, and also invite George DeRousse, your councillor. Good morning. Welcome. You found your husband? That's good.[303.13][303.13](Laughter) I wish to extend a warm welcome to the family and friends of Alan and Judy who are here with us today at City Hall. Alan and Judy have a true understanding of philanthropic giving and certainly lead by example. Alan et Judy Graham ont vraiment compris le...
Alan and Judy have a true understanding of philanthropic giving and certainly lead by example.
...their volunteer efforts and their wonderful contributions they make to their community of Ausgood and the surrounding area. Alan and Judy Graham became strong sponsors of charitable organisations in Ausgood during their 30-year business career with AJ's Catering. After retiring from the business, they continued their volunteer efforts with fries, offering a french fry truck to local charities to support their fundraising events. And I have been served many dozen times by that french fry truck, as you can tell by my waistline. And they support the Ausgood Care Centre, which is a wonderful community facility in Ausgood, and help to organise the annual Busting Out the Brews event. Alan served as the emcee for the event, the most recent which raised over $71,000 for the Ausgood Care Centre's redevelopment fund.[374.31][374.31](Applause) Alan also volunteers with the Greeley Lions fundraising events, is founder of the neighbourhood Al Bowers Outdoor Rink and continues to maintain it with others. Il est également bénévole lors des activités de financement de club...
He's also a volunteer in the Greeley Lions fundraising events and is founder of the neighbourhood Albert Bowers Outdoor Rink and continues to maintain it with other volunteers.
Metcalf Fair car show. Judy has been equally busy volunteering with the Metcalf Fair and the annual Shroom Fest for five years. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Alan and Judy for their many contributions, not just to their community, but a lot of these events have citywide reach to them. And obviously, the Metcalf Fair is such a great big event as it comes into town just next month, as a matter of fact. J'aimerais saisir cette occasion pour remercier...
So I would like to take this opportunity to thank Alan and Judy for their many contributions to the community and the entire city.
Councillor George DeRousse, who's equally proud of the great work that you do, to present you with the Mayor's City Builder Award. Thank you. And...
Thank you.[446.63][446.63](Applause)
You get two. Come on up here and we'll get a little picture. You stay in the middle. Once your podium there, George. You both can say a few words. Okay, there we go. I'd like to thank councillor DeRousse and Jane for all the work and effort they've put into making this possible. It is a true pleasure to be able to be so involved with our community, and that's made possible by hundreds of great, community-minded people who are on the committees with us and come out to our events. Hope to see you at some of them. Got a brand-new one on Friday. We're looking for 400 people for a fish fry for the United Church in Metcalf. Thank you and see you at some of our great charity fundraisers.[508.13][508.13](Applause)
I'd just like to thank everyone as well. It's been a great pleasure helping the community and working with everyone to make this possible. Thank you so much.[524.01][524.01](Applause)
None of this wouldn't have happened without Judy helping me out all the way along. Thank you, dear. My team, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good. Thanks, Jane. Congratulations and thank you again. Now gives me great pleasure to announce the presentation of a City of Ottawa Award for heroism to a member of our Emergency and Protective Services Department. On behalf of City Council and senior management, I extend a warm welcome to everyone here this morning, and pleased to invite our guest of honour, James Walton, to come forward. I'd also ask city manager Steve Cantalacas, Tony Damonte, general manager of Emergency and Protective Services, and Roger Chapman, manager of Bylaw and Regulatory Services, to come forward for this very special presentation. Je suis très heureux de vous accueillir à cette présentation.
I'm very pleased to welcome you to this important presentation.
Part of the employee recognition programme. Le prix pour l'héroïsme de la...
A City of Ottawa Award for heroism is part of the employee recognition programme.
Presented to employees who take decisive action to benefit others under extraordinary circumstances. Nomination, nominees, rather, may distinguish themselves by going beyond the scope of normal responsibility to perform an act of courage, take a quick action to provide assistance in a critical situation, by saving a life or preventing serious injury, damage, or disaster. This honour is a significant acknowledgement of someone who provides special assistance in the time of need to prevent a tragedy. Cet honneur...
This honour is significant acknowledgement of someone who provides special assistance in time of need to prevent a tragedy.
Also represents the heartfelt thanks, not only of the people who are directly affected, but of the entire community that appreciates and commends individuals among us that are willing and able to take action to help others. I have the pleasure of inviting our city manager, Steve Cantalacas, to make the official presentation, but before that, I'd like to take this opportunity to personally thank and commend our emergency responders for all of the work they do in our communities. And we have a number of folks here from Bylaw Services, and we thank you for being with us. Mais tout d'abord, je tiens à profiter de l'occasion pour...
But I want to take this opportunity to personally thank and commend our emergency responder.
All the residents of Ottawa, I thank all of you for your professionalism and for providing services that make us proud and thankful as a community. And now councillor Steve Cantalacas will explain the great heroic efforts of James.
Thank you, Mayor. It's indeed an honour and a pleasure to have this opportunity to recognise one of our own, an incredible City of Ottawa employee, James Walton, who's a parking control officer with Bylaw and Regulatory Services. I think he might have given me a couple of tickets over the years, but I don't know. Today, we're representing James to the City of Ottawa Award for Heroism in special recognition of his heroic actions on January 16, 2017. Aujourd'hui, nous remettons à James le prix...
We are presenting James in the City of Ottawa Award for Heroism in special recognition of his heroic action on January 16.
Situation where a child was suffering a seizure and was unresponsive. He acted quickly, taking control of the situation and flagging down an Ottawa police vehicle. Together with Officer Abdullah Ahmed, they provided first aid to the unresponsive child until the Ottawa paramedics arrived on scene. James, your actions undoubtedly affected the outcome of what could have been a truly tragic situation. Emergencies can happen anytime, anywhere, and it makes me incredibly proud to know that our colleagues, neighbours, and first responders are there looking out for us. It truly is a one-city-one-team atmosphere here in this organisation. So on behalf of the city and the community, it is my honour to present the City of Ottawa Award for Heroism to James Walton. Congratulations, Felice, Stétyon, and Merci. Thank you, James.[768.61][768.61](Applause)
Thank you, Mayor. Well, again, thank you, James, for your quick actions, and thank you to your colleagues for being here to show their support to you and to share in this very auspicious moment. Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Conseilmane.
Present.
Councillor Minnick.
Present.
Councillor Harder.
Here.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Present.
Councillor Elshantiri.
Present.
Councillor Cadre.
Present.
Councillor Taylor.
Here.
Councillor Shirelli.
Here.
Councillor Egli.
Present.
Councillor Deans.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Councillor Flurry.
You see.
Councillor Neusbaum.
Here.
Councillor McKenney.
Present.
Councillor Leaper.
You see.
Councillor Brockington.
Here.
Councillor Chernoshenko.
Present.
Conseilcloutier.
Present.
Conseilblay.
Here.
Councillor DeRousse.
Here.
Councillor Moffett.
Here.
Councillor Kakish.
Present.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
You see.
Le quorum est à tien, Monsieur le maire.
You'll see.
You have quorum.
Valeable confirmation of minutes for the 23rd of August, 2017. Carried. Declaration of interest, including those originally arising from prior meetings. Declaration de conflit intérêt. Councillor Elshantiri, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Worship. I, councillor Eli Elshantiri, declare potential direct pugnary interest on item nine, Planning Committee Report 50, zoning bylaw amendment, amendment to accommodate reconstruction in the area affected by the May flood 2017, as I own a property in the area affected by the May flooding event.
Right, and I have your written declaration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Communications as presented. Councillor Tierney is advised he'll be absent from the City Council meeting of September 13th due to city business. As you know, he's our FCM rep and he's at an FCM board meeting. Motion introduced, reports. Motion important, presentation de rapport. Councillor Hubley, seconded by councillor Kakish, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That the report from the Manitick Mill Quarter Community Development Corporation, titled The Manitick Mill Quarter Community Development Corporation 2016 Annual Report, Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report 27, Community and Productive Services Committee Report Number 25, Fedco Report Number 27, Planning Committee Report Number 49A, and Transportation Committee Report Number 26 be received and considered in pursuant to subsection 35 bracket 5, the procedure by law 2016-377. Council receive and consider the Planning Committee Report Number 50. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
On the motion, carried. Thank you. Item number one, report, rapport, Manitick Mill Quarter Community Development Corporation. Carried. Thank you, councillor Moffett. Committee reports, Community and Protective Services Committee Report 25, rapport numéro 25, Committee des services communautaires et de protection. Item two, Ottawa Paramedic Service 2016 Annual Report. Received. Property standards by law examine réglement sur les normes d'entraîne des biens. Carried. Finance and Economic Development Committee Report Number 27, rapport numéro 27, Committee des finances et de développement économique. Item four, 2017 Operating Capital Budget Q2 Status Report. Received and carried. Item number five, Ontario Regulation 8112, municipal requirement for the establishment of Rita Carlton Raceway as a gaming site. Hold. Item number six, Stage Two Light Rail Transit Project and Procurement Update, mise à jour sur l'étape de projet de train léger sur rail et le plan d'approvisionnement. Hold. Planning Committee Report Number 49A, rapport numéro 49 odds, Committee de l'urbanisme, zoning bylaw amendment 494 Lisgar Street. Councillor Hubley and Harder, or rather Harder and Hubley have a technical amendment. Councillor Harder, would you like to introduce it, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's therefore be resolved the council amend the document two with a report by removing the second bullet point under two-point B, the minimum rear yard setback is eight-and-a-half metres, and replacing it with the following bullet points, the minimum rear yard setback is zero metres from any part of the building, point six metres or less in height, and eight-and-a-half metres for any part of the building above point six metres. Required communal amenity area may be located on the roof of that part of the building measuring less than point seven metres in height. And be it further resolved pursuant to subsection 3417, with the planning act, no further notice be given.
So this is a technical requirement, Mr. Willis?
Yes.
So on the amendment? Carried. On the report as amended? Carried. Item number eight, zoning bylaw amendment 124 Battersea Crescent, modification de règlement de zonage 1 de 4, Croissant Battersea. Carried.
Descent, Mr. Mayor, please.
Descent by councillors Cadre and Hubley. And Wilkinson. Planning Committee Report Number 50, rapport numéro 50, Committee de l'urbanisme, zoning bylaw amendment to accommodate reconstruction in areas affected by the flood. So councillor Elshantiri will leave the table.
Carried.
On the motion? Carried. Thank you. Item number 10, Traffic and Parking Bylaw Update 2017, mise à jour 2017 de règlement sur la circulation et stationnement. Hold. This is a very controversial one coming up. 11, Orleans Rib Fest 2017, road closure, yays and nays. On the motion? Carried. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agenda? On the bulk consent agenda as presented? Carried. Okay, so we'll go back to the first item that was held, which is Ontario Regulation 8112, municipal requirements for the establishment of Rita Carlton Raceways as a gaming site. I believe councillor Neusbaum had asked that this be held. Questions and comments, councillor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions to begin with. First, just, I guess, to staff, on, I read in the report that there is an expectation that should municipal permission for the site be given, the expectation from the applicant is that the 21 gaming tables that had been, I know the subject of a previous council's discussion, will be installed. I'm just wondering whether the revenue share of those gaming tables has been established. I know there's mention in the report of what the percentages are for the slot tables, and I couldn't see anything in the report that spoke to what the revenue share of the gaming tables is going to be.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, when they announced way back when, I'm thinking two or three years ago, the inclusion of gaming tables, they gave us the formula for it already. So, yes, the revenue sharing has already been established by the province. Off the top of my head, I don't remember what it is, but yes, the province has already set that out.
Okay, maybe you could send that so that we have a...
I will send that to you.
Okay, great. And then my next question is just about the regulation requirements. It is clear from the regulations that the province is looking for the city to do a number of things, including, of course, seeking public input and then providing the province with a summary of that, of that input. And I'm just noticing on, in the report on page eight, that staff mentioned that there were a series of meetings that took place on the issue of casinos and gambling back in 2012 and 2013, at which there were many delegations present, 31 delegations at one meeting, 11 at another, 16 at another, so clearly significant public interest in the item, and they are mentioned in the report. And so, at the conclusion, at the top of page nine, when staff indicate that as part of the regulation requirements, that staff would intend to send all comments received, I just, I just wasn't clear, does that include then the comments that were made as part of that 2012-2013 process?
Mr. Chair, the answer is yes. What I was planning to do with the delegated authority the council gives me is provide the regulatory input that we received this time around, but also provide the OLG with the, all of the previous discussions and reports and input that we received from the public.
Okay, I think, I think that's a great thing. I mean, the only challenge for me from a process point of view is presumably one of the reasons why the province wants that, and I think if you look at the reg, they do it in a particular order, is, I mean, and, you know, I guess I could have gone through the archives and tried to find that information, but without having that before me, you know, the issue is I don't have a copy of what the city is going to be sending to the province in terms of the public input. I know we're delegating authority for staff to do that after the vote is taken, but it does strike me as a bit awkward because, I mean, for my part, since I wasn't here in 2012-2013, presumably the reason the province did that is to encourage council to consider that input when voting on establishing a gaming site. But maybe I'll move on to just kind of the next series of questions, which are, which are public health related. And I did have a chance...
Councillor, just, just to remind you, what's before us is only the passage of Regulation 8112, so I'd ask that you put in the context of passing the regulation.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the challenge is, is that the regulation asks council to provide a summary of public input, and presumably the public input spoke about the costs and benefits of a casino in establishing a gaming site, and some of the costs of establishing a gaming site are public health related, as were identified in the 2013 report that Public Health Agency produced called Health and Social Impacts Related to Problems with Gambling in Ottawa. So in considering the vote on the regulation, I'm considering the costs and benefits, which include the public health aspects. So we've got a report from 2013 that makes some fairly profound conclusions. One of them is that it is estimated that only 10% of Ottawa adults with severe gambling problems were seeking treatment. The report says that more than 40% of those seeking treatment are either economically vulnerable or have been treated for mental health, emotional, behavioural problems.
As you know, if this proceeds and if there is an application, it's going to be a very thorough application with all kinds of public consultation through the process. It will likely come back to either planning or ARIC, and that's the time to have that conversation, because we had that. That's not what we're being asked to do today.
So I'd remind the member again, it is, before us is the regulation only, and that's why it says specifically in the box, Ontario Regulation 8112. If you don't want to have gaming at the Rita Carlton Raceway, pleased to vote against that, but we're, what's before us really is a technical requirement by the province in order to move forward. And as councillor Harder said, when the application comes in from the Hardrock Group, we will have that fulsome discussion at that point.
Yeah, I mean, I think...
Do you have any other questions or comments on Regulation 8112?
Well, no, I think, I don't see the chief medical officer of health here, so I'm happy to seize on the questions on public health. But, you know, I do think, and I think it's important for me to put on the record, that since this is the first time a vote on gambling has happened in this term of council, and given that the province has specifically asked that municipalities provide public input and provide a perspective on whether it wants to sanction a gaming site, you know, I would argue that the cost and benefits of establishing a gaming site is germane to that question of whether we vote in favour. So clearly, and I know I asked that Fedco whether or not we are in our budget currently funding any dollars for problem gambling from the city budget, and I understood, and the answer was no, so I will...
Point of order, councillor Lay. Councillor Lay's microphone.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you've made your ruling. At that point, it should end. If the speaker wishes to challenge the chair, he's free to do so, but I think we should move on.
I think he's got six seconds, so probably solves itself.
Okay, perfect timing. On that basis, Mr. Mayor, it won't surprise you then that, I think in the absence of an understanding of what the city is doing on this front, it's very hard to vote in favour of establishing a gaming site.
Okay, thank you. Councillor McKenney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I guess, picking, picking up on that makes my decision a bit clearer. I'm not going to be able to support establishing a gaming site, which is, I think, what we're being asked to do here, which will add, which will add 21 tables. So, and that, I don't believe that we're fully prepared or informed on the possible repercussions of that. You know, I, we do know that, that, that gaming is a public health concern, and it does have the potential to cause mental health, social, financial impacts to individuals and families. So if we're going to vote today, or be asked to vote today, I guess I'm going to ask the city solicitor, because I don't see the medical health here, is it not reasonable to at least ask or question or query whether, at some point, if we, if we look that, if I look at page six of the report, it says here, "Staff is now in a position to undertake the analysis of the potential economic benefits and impacts and potential social impacts", and I believe "social" probably means "public health", "related to an expanded gaming facility at the Rita Carlton Raceway and report back to Fedco and council as directed and in advance of any future development applications." So, yes, we will want that back in advance of future development applications, but at the same time, we need to be able to, as council, to, to be able to make a decision...
I'm not going to be able to support establishing a gaming site, which is, I think, what we're being asked to do here, which will add, which will add 21 tables, so, and that, I don't believe that we're fully prepared or informed on, on the possible repercussions of that. You know, I, we do know that, 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 that gaming is, is a public health concern, and it does have the potential to cause mental health, social, financial impacts to individuals and families. So if we're going to vote today, or be asked to vote today, I guess I'm going to ask the city solicitor, because I don't see the medical office, health here, is it not reasonable to at least ask, or question, or query whether, at some point, if we, if we look that, if I look at page six of the report, it says here, "Staff is now in a position to undertake the analysis of the potential economic benefits and impacts and potential social impacts," and I believe social probably means public health, "related to an expanded gaming facility at the Rita Carlton Raceway and report back to FedCo and council as directed and in advance of any future development applications." So, yes, we will want that back in advance of future development applications, but at the same time, we need to be able to, as council, to, to be able to make a decision on today's report. At the very least, I'd like to know whether the chair, I sit on the Board of Health, and I would like to know if the chair would be willing to receive direction that the Board of Health would request that the Medical Officer of Health conduct further research into the broader community health impacts of an expanded casino in Ottawa, that uses a health impact assessment, that considers things like mental health, impacts like employment, local economic development, social safety net impacts. Is that something, and then perhaps we could have that brought back to council, so that we will have that information in front of us this term of council?
So if I could just offer a comment, I know councillor Egli, excuse me, had asked that question of councillor Cadre as chair of public health, and my understanding is councillor Cadre, that you have already initiated the action that the Board of Health and the Chief Medical Officer of Health meet with the Hardrock people. You can comment on that in just a moment, but I just also, to councillor McKenney...
But that's not what I'm asking for, though, not just that we have a conversation, but that the Board of Health look at the...
We don't know what the final application of Hardrock is, because they have not submitted...
But we do know, I think, public health, to be fair, we have a 2013 report. The argument is that it's four years old, so we're not going to take, that, we're not going to take it at face value four years later, but I don't think that, I think that public health could certainly look at health impacts of, of gaming without an application in front of us. I think that that is quite fair to ask, and I'm more than happy to wait until I get to public health on Monday and put it to the board there.
Okay, well then, that's probably...
Sure.
Right, okay. Anything else, councillor?
No, just to, so I'm, my question is still on the floor to the chair.
Councillor Cadre, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to councillor McKenney. And this question, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, that councillor Egli posed to me is about a week ago, a similar question, and I said to Mr., or councillor Egli, that first of all, you know, thank him for his concern on the gambling issues, and I just did just speak with the Medical Officer of Health, to say, look, at the present time, the chair or the board has not made a decision as of yet on this issue, and as councillor McKenney mentioned, the fact that the data that we currently have is almost five years old. So, the Medical Officer of Health said, and I agree with them, that we should bring this item back to the Board of Health, do a study on it again, and look at some of the changing environments that have happened in the last five years in the city, and then come back to the board with the reports, you know, I don't know the timeline, it's probably sometime mid-part next year or even later next year, have that discussion at the board, and then go from there at that point to the recommendations that may be coming in the future to us.
All right, thank you. Councillor Chernoshenko, please.
Yes, thank you. Slightly different tack this morning. I did already raise my, my questions at FedCo and was assured that there would be the opportunity for this kind of fulsome debate on health and social issues when we get to that point, that this is really, as you described, a technical amendment. Certainly people could vote today to sort of stop it in its tracks and say, I, I disagree so profoundly, I don't even want to get to that discussion. I've chosen the opposite, where I did vote in favor of this at FedCo and will again today, because I do have some quite profound concerns about the, the health impacts, health costs, et cetera, cost to the taxpayer, as well as the social implications, but I will bring those later. My question today was, quite simply, will we also have the opportunity at that time to ask questions around public transit and transportation issues that may arise out of an expanded site? Can I assume, get from staff, that a much deeper discussion would occur at that time when we know what it is that we're, that we're dealing with on the transportation issues?
Mr. Willis?
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll start. Mr. Manconi may add to what I have to say, is that we do not yet have an application for any further expansion of the facility, and yet do not know what their phasing plan is, what scope that might actually be, and there are, our planning processes actually are quite rigorous in terms of the expectations for support on transportation impact studies, regardless the application type, and if, depending on what they're actually doing, whether they're adding a use, changing the building, all the sort, we will have different requirements. So, transportation services and planning infrastructure, economic development will assess transportation impacts, and depending on the nature of the application they make, they'll be before committee, as I said, depending on the nature of the application, or it might be through some other process if it's a minor element. So, I think, I hope that answers your question, and if Mr. Manconi has anything to add.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and of course, we'll put everything out in terms of being innovative if there are other modes of transportation that they want to use in terms of public transit, and how we can do cost recovery and things like that with them as, as partners.
Yeah, it was my assumption that that would be normal, standard process. I just wanted to have that verified, if you will, that, that we would do that when, as I said, when we know what it is that we're dealing with, that we ensure that the appropriate transportation and transit infrastructure and services would, would come with that. Thank you.
Great, thanks, councillor Chernoshenko. Councillor Deans?
Thank you. Well, what before, what is before us today is Regulation 8112. This comes to us from the province. It's very specific what it says. It says that the municipal council seeks input, seeks public input into the establishment of the proposed gaming sites, and gives the corporation in writing a description of the steps it took to do so, and a summary of the public input it received. Well, I don't see anywhere in this document a description of the steps this municipality took to engage the public in a debate that they're very interested in, nor do I see in this report a summary of the public input. So why is that document missing?
Mr. Mayor, on page eight of the report, staff have set out in detail the posting, the public service announcement that went out, the posting that actually, under your direction, Mr. Mayor, we ensured that the FedCo agenda with regards to this item was out an additional six days in advance for notice of the public, and with regards to the word councillor's particular question, the process that we took and the input is to be provided to OLG, and we are continuing to get it, as we do from the time we produce reports till the time that council has already made a decision on it, so I anticipate that if I'm receiving an email, or if we're receiving an email on the, on the, online, we will be including all of those, but I don't have all of those before me, Mr. Chair.
See, I would think that the council that's making the decision should actually see the summary of the public input before we make the decision. I would also think, on an issue that has a specific regulatory requirement, I don't agree with those who said it's a technical requirement. I think the, the regulatory requirement is there to encourage meaningful consultation, and I would argue that we have not met that test, that we have actually flown this so under the radar that we know in past, when we've had casino discussions and debate, that it has garnered a huge amount of public interest. And yet, if we fly under the radar and send out a PSA and nobody talks about it, then you get, what, maybe three or four written comments? That's it. And I think, to me, this is not meaningful public consultation. I think the community expects this council to act responsibly, and part of acting responsibly is to ensure that we engage them in a meaningful way on issues that are very important to the future of the municipality. And I would contend that that has not happened. I would also contend that council should see a summary of the input that we have received, and we should have made a far greater effort to engage the public.
Thank you. I believe we had six people write in, all in support, so that was documented in the FedCo agenda. Councillor Harder?
Thank you for mentioning that, Mr. Mayor, and I agree. I mean, we have before us what we have before us. We're being asked for one thing. All the other language that we've heard from councillors that have said what they said doesn't change the fact that, I don't know about the rest of you, I do know councillor Wilkinson and councillor Middick didn't receive one email or one call against this, even by, from people who possibly didn't understand, like some of you didn't understand what was before us today. So I'd like to put that in perspective. Let's look at the $350 million investment that this is going to be for economic development in this city, what it's going to mean for us, and let's have a very fulsome process as we roll through to either Planning or AREC. You'll have time to do all the stuff that you're talking about. We'll see how many people come out. I actually forget how many people came out the last time, but it wasn't a lot. So, put in perspective of what we're being asked to do. I'm going to be voting for this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Harder. Councillor Brockington, please, on the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good morning. Just on the report, I'll be voting in favor. I'll be in favor of all options before us, and I do believe that we'll be having a greater conversation when this comes to Planning Committee in, well, whenever it comes, in a month or so, a couple of months. There were a number of consultations that were undertaken this summer by the city, including this, and in absence of any type of, of public meeting hosted by the city, I do see it as the role of councillors to engage their communities, and that's what I did, and I did receive a fair amount of, of comments from my community, all except one comment with support of, of what's before us today. So, you know, it's summer's maybe not the best time to do consultation, but it's certainly up to councillors to decide how to engage their communities and seek input. So, at this point, I am satisfied, and I do believe the public will be further engaged and consulted as this makes its way through planning. I appreciate the commitment that public health will be looking at with the social impacts. I hope they'll look at mitigation strategies as well, they'll be part of the report. My only question, Mr. Mayor, is regarding the detailed economic analysis, is that done in-house by City of Ottawa staff, or are those types of reports submitted by the Hardrock Corporation?
Mr. Willis?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. What we contemplate at this point in time is, we will likely be provided a package by the applicant on their perceived and their analysis of economic impact, but we would probably retain external peer review of that, depending, again, again, at what point, what application we have before us. So if it was a significant application, that, that's how we see that unfolding right now.
Excellent. There's a lot of variables I would like to see included in that. I'll certainly meet with you offline. It's not for discussion today, but yes, there are, there are potentially drawbacks from this, but there are a significant number of advantages as well, and I would like that economic analysis to cover both sides. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Egli, please.
This question is, is for the city solicitor. Some of us around this table, and I think it's become abundantly clear, some of us around this table were here for the last casino vote, some weren't, and those who weren't are concerned that there's something, something different, something new that we're dealing with, and I guess my, my first question to you is, how does the vote that's in front of us today, Mr. O'Connor, differ from the vote that was taken last term? Is there a substantive difference between what we voted on and what we heard from the public on last term, and what we're being asked to do here today? Or is it simply a reaffirmation, if you will, of, of what happened last term?
Mr. Mayor, I would answer in, sort of in twofold. Number one, it is, in my opinion, largely a reaffirmation, but having said that, the last time around, the thrust, if I can characterize it, is that of councillor's view, council's view, was with regards to putting the information that council wanted as part of the procurement process that OLG was going to undertake. And in that regard, council was very clear that they wanted RCR to be the site. So that's my response, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so, in some ways, if I can kind of simplify what you said, Mr. O'Connor, this vote is, is about an exchange of keys, in effect. We have, we have a new operator, but the question of, of whether we were going to do it and where we were going to do it in terms of location, that vote has already effectively been taken. This is, this is really about, is landlord A or landlord B, in effect, going to be operating the facility? Is that...
That's an excellent characterization, Mr. Mayor.
So, to, to follow up on that, again, I have, I have significant concerns around gambling in the city. I'm also, I think, pragmatic in recognizing that gambling is already here, and not only in our city, but across the river, on your computer screen, and it's, it's not going to go away. So one of the, one of the changes, and I said, to simplify it, in effect, we have a new landlord, but one of the differences that so far we found is, that new landlord, landlord, in, in the person of Hardrock, has, has confirmed through the city solicitor's office in a very public way, that they are prepared to sit with our public health officials and talk about responsible gambling in the city, and what, what they already do at their current facilities, and what they might be prepared to do in partnership or conjunction with input from public health. So I want to, first of all, I want to thank the chair, knowing full well that he walks a bit of a tightrope here, because council is not allowed, and, and the solicitor can jump in if I get this wrong, we're not allowed to actually direct the chair of public health or the board itself as to what they should and shouldn't be doing. We can ask, and, and the chair has graciously acted as a bridge, if you will, between council and committee, or board, rather, on this issue, and has assured me, in response to the questions that I raised, and again, in a very public way, that those meetings are going to happen, and moreover, there is going to be, there's going to be, what happens at that meeting is going to be reported back to the board and made available to council members. And I think we've also heard from, at least I've heard, from the Chief Medical Officer of Health, that things have changed over the last four or five years, and in order to have a report, the public health wants to feel comfortable, from a professional perspective, standing behind, they feel that more work needs to be done, and so that we have the most up-to-date information in front of us. And I think part of that discussion has to be what, what flows from the meetings with Hardrock, what's put on the table, what those discussions have, as well as what Hardrock's eventual application is going to be, both in terms of the amenities they're going to put in, the transportation, but also what, what size they're looking for in terms of gambling. I think we all know they're going to come back and ask for more, and that's something that has to go in the hopper, as well as part of that discussion, from a funding perspective, from measures that we can take to, to deal with gambling in, in a responsible fashion. So, again, I want to thank the chair of public health. He and I have had many, many discussions over the last number of weeks, as I have with the Chief Medical Officer of Health and some of my colleagues, and I think that they're also recognizing that gambling is here, it's here to stay, whether we like it or not. Clearly, some of us don't like it, but we have to deal with it in a, in a pragmatic, responsible, and reasonable way, and I think that public health is doing that, and is prepared to continue to do that, and the chair has continued to act, as I said, as a bridge between the, between council and, and the board, to make that happen, to keep us informed, to help us make reasonable and responsible decisions as we go forward with the most up-to-date and current information possible. So I'll just wrap up by saying, you know, further to what councillor Harder said, when the fulsome application comes forward, there will be a lot of the public coming out, talking about all of those issues. I welcome that discussion, I think we should have that discussion, and, but we'll be making it in an informed way on the, on the plan that's in front of us at that time. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Egli. Councillor Leaper, please, on the report.
Thank you, Chair. I do need some, some clarity in light of the answer that was provided to, to the councillor with respect to what we're doing today. Mr. Mr. O'Connor, you've characterized this as a reaffirmation of, of the council's previous decision. I assume, though, that this council is not bound by the previous council's decision.
That would be correct, Mr. Mayor. It would be a new term of council, so if council was inclined, they could vote against it.
So if, if this council were to oppose that report, we, we do have that latitude to revisit moving ahead with an expansion of gambling at all in Ottawa?
If you oppose the report today, Mr. Mayor, it would end this particular aspect of it, because I'm not aware that there's anything else before you.
Thank you, and, you know, certainly, I, I don't consider myself to be bound by the previous term of council's decision. This was an issue I heard a lot about four years ago, or at the door in, in emails, there was a significant discussion, and I'm not comfortable supporting this recommendation. I am, I am not comfortable that there are so many people in our casinos who shouldn't be, that the social damage that's being caused by gambling is, is, is unacceptable. The, so I won't be supporting today's report. I do have...
I do have a question about the movement to Planning Committee and the rezonings that come after this. On what basis are we at Planning Committee and then at council going to be able to approve or not approve of rezonings on the basis of social considerations? I believe that our rezoning applications are bound by Planning Act considerations, and I want to understand whether or not the health implications, for example, would be reason for us to turn down a zoning application.
Mr. Mayor, I think the official plan sets some very broad objectives, and should the council or any councillor wish to raise a point that is consistent with the language council has adopted in its official plan, it creates a line for exploration of issues. Council, in its previous 2013 decision, benchmarked a number of considerations, particularly on the economic and the board of health-related aspect of it, and depending on the application, again, depending on what they are actually asking for, at what time and what phase, they may be before us in the context of an official plan policy.
Okay, that's a lot of uncertainty for me. Colleagues, I don't think we are bound by the 2013, 14 decisions. The opportunity is before us today to say no to expanded gambling in Ottawa. There is gambling all around us, but I don't think that the municipality needs to be complicit in its expansion, and I do hope that folks will reconsider the approach that council is taking. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Shirelli, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. This sounds like a very exciting project and important for the city, but just aside from that, I do have a question dealing with consultation. When we dealt, and I think this is for the city manager, when we dealt with the consultation on consultations, where we established our consultation policy, we adopted the principle that consultation is only real if the opinions that are gathered are delivered to the decision-makers before the decision is made. And that probably would be obvious to anyone above the third grade, but that is our, what we supposedly adopted as a principle. So, I'm wondering, in this case, that didn't quite happen, but I'm wondering if we're seeing a creep through the whole organization where that type of thing is going to continue.
Mr. Mayor, I'll begin from the sort of legal and procedural perspective. If I recollect our public engagement model, the concept with regards to public engagement and public consultation that I think a couple of the councillors have raised is virtually this two-way dialogue and the importance of having that information. With regards to Ontario Regulation 8112, what the law actually says is, "Seek public input," and I think that language was put in there directly by the OLG, by the minister, by the government of the day, because it was not meant to be public consultation, and it is not meant to be the city's public engagement, it is meant to be the regulatory seeking of input from the public. With respect, Mr. Mayor, I think that's rather different than our public consultation model, but I'll leave the city manager to add if he feels inclined.
Anything else, Councillor Shirelli?
Well, okay, but the question was actually for the city manager, and it was whether this kind of approach is happening anywhere else in the organization, or are we sticking to what we had decided earlier?
Mr. Mayor, as the city solicitor said, and, you know, there's a technical portion to it in terms of whether it's input or consultation, and he just provided his answer, but that response is not reflective of what the public consultation response is that we've developed and we have on our website, and that was before council. To me, they're two different things.
Okay. Well, I think technically, they may be different if we're ever hauled in front of a judge, but I think to the public, they're probably the same thing. But since there is another much bigger step in front of us, I will support the report.
Great. Thank you. Councillor Moffett, please. And I want to thank, Councillor Moffett is my representative on the municipal panel of those cities that have gaming operations, so I thank him for that extra workload.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to represent you with that group. It's a very good group. It's the host municipalities of all OLG sites across the province, save Niagara Falls and Toronto, and it's a good connection between the municipalities and the Ontario Lottery and Gaming Corporation. When you look at this, there's no question that the current council isn't bound by the previous council's decisions. No one's suggesting that. If you're principally against gaming, then be against gaming. No one ever said when you got elected, you had to check your principles at the door. I get that. I would never ask you to do that. You look at the previous votes, though, and when you look at a report today, the report today asks something of the residents, we want input. If you're saying we have to look at previous reports and say that we should take that input as well and take it as input to this, it's not entirely relevant, because all the votes were different. In 2011, you had a vote on gaming. It was a pilot project for 21 tables. It was a unanimous decision of council in favor. In 2012, it was the Ontario Lottery and Gaming Corporation's modernization plan. It was open-ended. It wasn't RCR. It was gaming in this city. That's where we had the 30 delegations, October of 2012. It was a 19 to 5 vote on council. Those opposed, including me, were opposed for various reasons. Councillor Cherninchenko was opposed to gaming at that time. I wasn't. My opposition was that the OLG itself was misleading, was untrustworthy at that time. They've proven that to be true, unfortunately, following that case, because of their experience throughout the province. That fundamentally changed how they went forward with their modernization plan. In that time, they've changed their CEO, they've changed their chair. The new CEO, Stephen Rigby, is quite strong. He's very good. He's engaged with the municipalities, engaged with the issues. They've put in place an executive vice president of horse racing, Cal Bricker. When they came up with the modernization plan, they had no intention of protecting horse racing. Every single plan across the province was to shut down racing facilities in favor of larger gaming facilities in urban cores. Putting Cal Bricker in place shows that they have a commitment to horse racing, protecting that rural business that we see across the province. The 2013 vote also had opposition and proponents, but that vote was on isolating the site to RCR. The opponents were from folks that wanted the site elsewhere, in communities that, the communities might not have wanted it, but maybe the proponent wanted it. So, when you take the input that we got, Ottawa Tourism was one of those that spoke in favor back in 2012, but they spoke in favor of gaming options in the city. They didn't necessarily speak in favor of RCR. So, their input that they provided in 2012 is quite irrelevant for me. Even though they were in favor, I'd love to take that as input to this, but it's irrelevant because it was speaking to something different. The point is, we've come a long way in this, and the OLG has come a long way. And when we did approve something in 2012, or 2013, sorry, the intent was not just a gaming site. It was something more than that. Unfortunately, elsewhere in the province, they haven't seen that. The township of Kavon-Monnigan, they might lose Core Thadons in favor of a new facility, Shorelines Casino in Peterborough. You know, that's frustrating for them. It's something that, that's the fear that they had when the modernization plan came forward. We haven't been unfortunate in that regard. We have a proponent that is not just a name-brand proponent, it's actually the corporation. Hardrock is the partner. In a lot of cases, Hardrock partners with someone else, just in name only. This is actually Hardrock coming to Ottawa, partnering with the owner, so it's not a lease deal, it's the current operator staying there, and there's a commitment to the horse racing facilities, a commitment to rural jobs. That's what makes this important. But looking at the input today, the input that we get right now on this file, on expanded gaming, has to be held higher than the input that we got in 11, 12, and 13, because it was a different time, and there were different reports, and the input was relevant to that time. And you've heard today, and Councillor Egli mentioned it, you know, Councillor Cadre's mentioned it, other councillors mentioned it, there is a commitment, Hardrock has a commitment to responsible gaming. They're a leader in the industry in responsible gaming. They will meet with the Board of Public Health, they will meet with Dr. Levy. Those are all important things that we all are asking for, and they've committed to those things. So, there's really nothing left here that we haven't already addressed. There's commitments to a transportation plan in the future, to make sure that we're covering those issues around the site, around the Finley Creek community, toward Greeley, those areas. You know, working, continue to work with Councillor Drews, Councillor Harder, and enroll Chair of Planning, the Mayor's Office, and what they bring.
You can wrap up.
Of course, I am in the process of that. So, we're getting to that point, but until such time that we have that application, to see what they're proposing, to see the impact of what that proposal would be on the community, whether it's from a transportation perspective, whether it's from a socioeconomic perspective, we won't know until we get that application, and we'll vet that application as best as possible.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to talk on this item or ask questions? If not, I'll wrap up with a couple of observations. I'm supporting the recommendation. This is, the province several years ago asked our opinion as municipal leaders and as a community, and after many meetings and months of work and deliberation, council agreed that the only gaming facility should be located at Rita Carlton Raceway with an expansion of a number of table games. So, what we're being asked for today is a technical requirement by the province for us to pass Regulation 8112, or not pass it, Support 8112, as a requirement of the facility to continue generating jobs and economic activity for the south end and the rural part of our community. The whole issue of there wasn't enough public consultation, well, we actually, in the city solicitor, listed what we did. We went actually and brought the report out sooner, sent out a public service announcement. Many of us tweeted. I know members, certain members of council actively pursued media opportunities to talk about it, and we can't force members of the public to come here and speak on an issue. I believe we had six letters, they're all in support of the committee recommendation. The second issue with respect to problem gaming, I would strongly encourage both the Health Board and members of council not to accept responsibility for the problem gaming file. This is clearly a provincial responsibility. I was the minister responsible for that strategy, and I fought for 10 years not to have us go down that path of the province downloading responsibilities and costs to us. The province is responsible for gaming, policy, the operation of the facility, the distribution of the money, and guess what? They keep the lion's share of dollars. They should be putting those dollars, as they are, I believe last year was $9 million, into problem gaming programs. So, let's not go and start taking over a provincial responsibility where we have no expertise, and we have no money, and we have no legal responsibility. So, that is something I feel very passionately about, because the province would be laughing all the way to the bank if we decided to take over and put the $4.7 to $5 million we receive every year into problem gaming. The other thing is, you know, I asked for a list of Trillium grants. I've been in every single one of your wards, where many of you have been happily, you've been happily available to accept grants from the Trillium Fund. Pierre Pagey, a former board member, was at many of those presentations. I look at the list here, Centre de Ressorts de la Basse-Ville, Overbrook Community Association, Synopsy, United Way of Ottawa, the Anglican Diocese of Ottawa, Causeway Work Center, Epilepsy Ottawa, St. Mary's Home, Ten Oaks Projects. Many of us have been very happy to receive those dollars from Trillium. You know where Trillium gets its money? 100% from lotteries and gaming. So, I assume those people who don't support this will stop going to those giant novelty check presentations out of principle, because they don't want to accept that money from Trillium. So, let's be serious about this application. It's a technical requirement. Yes, this council can change the previous council's decision, but the reality is, if you don't want gaming, you can vote against this, and if this vote loses, then for all intents purposes, the horse track, the facility out there, the expansion that will come with tens of millions of dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars of investment, will not take place in Ottawa. So, those are the choices, and again, we received, last year, I believe, we received about $4.7 million, and since 2000, we've received $66 million. So, at budget time, if you want to start taking $5 million from that fund and put it into another budget item, you're more than welcome to do that, but you'll also have to explain what will be cut from the city budget, because it's not fair just to simply take one pot of money, because those dollars are shared amongst all services, bylaw, health, police, and everything else. So, I'd encourage you to vote for the recommendation, move this project forward. It's a good economic investment in the south end of the city, and in particular, rural Ottawa with respect to helping to keep the horse race community working and thriving in rural Ottawa. Okay, so, yays and nays, please, on the recommendations before us.
Councillor Moffett?
Yes.
Councillor Hubley?
Yes.
Councillor Newspom?
No.
Councillor McKenney?
No.
Councillor Brockington?
Yes.
Councillor Cadri?
Yes.
Councillor Wilkinson?
Yes.
Councillor Deans?
No.
Councillor Taylor?
Yes.
Councillor Harder?
Yes.
Conseil Cloutier?
We.
Councillor Cherninchenko?
Yes.
Councillor Elchantiri?
Yes.
Conseil Blay?
We.
Councillor Leeper?
No.
Councillor Midic?
We.
Conseil Fleury?
We.
Councillor DeRus?
Yes.
Councillor Kakish?
Yes.
Conseil Monnet?
We.
Councillor Egli?
Yes.
Councillor Shirelli?
Yes.
Councillor Tierney? Mayor Watson?
Yes.
19 yays, 4 nays?
Okay, that carries. The next item that was held was Item 6, Stage 2 Light Rail Transit Project and Procurement Update. Mise à jour sur l'étape 2 du projet de train léger. Who would like, who asked for this to be held? Councillor Taylor?
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to hold this just on a point of confirmation for Mr. Swale. At FedCo, we had the opportunity to chat a little bit about some specific concerns that the Crystal Beach Lakeview Community Association had with respect to the western leg of Stage 2, and you and I have had a chance to exchange emails on this and believe we've landed at a degree of specificity that will satisfy their concerns. So, we've exchanged that email, and I just wanted to get confirmation from you today that you're comfortable taking those points that were raised at FedCo, refined a little bit between then and now as direction.
Mr. Mayor, we are comfortable with doing that, and we'll take it as direction.
Okay. That's it. Thank you very much.
Great, and thank you, councillor. I know you've worked hard on this file, as other members of council have, particularly in the Crystal Beach, Lakeview communities. Next is Councillor Wilkinson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to say thanks, staff, for the way that they've dealt with this file. I've been at the puppet meetings for this, and the way that the public was extremely interested in this particular case, and I think you really went overboard to listen to them, to take their concerns into account, and I was really very pleased when you actually went, the key one of getting the maintenance yard moved away from a wooded area and extended it further west to put it beside Wesley Clover. And, Mr. Mayor, that also is a great benefit for Canada in the future. The Canada-Stedsville area is next on the list for Phase 3, and by having it already past Moody Drive, it means that's one less structure that will have to be built, and it's almost entirely grade-separated already to get as far as Terry Fox, because it's only the March Road and the railway that's between there that isn't already grade-separated. And that's what I think we have to take a look at Phase 3 now because of this being over. It's, I know we're going right from Phase 1 to Phase 2, starting immediately, and we should be prepared to go right from Phase 2 to Phase 3, which is far more challenging because of the financial obligations. And I think that because we now know, as reported by Planning Committee yesterday, clearly showed that the largest population of a community outside the Green Belt is the Canada-Stedsville area, the largest employment area outside the Green Belt is in the Canada-Stedsville area. There's roughly 60,000 jobs there, many of them very high-level, high-technical jobs, and it's booming right now. Yesterday, on Monday, I heard one company wants to expand in Canada North. They're there now. They can't because there's not enough space for them. And that's an indication of what's happened in the last 10 years. So, when we planned this light rail to go how it originally, to Moody, they, Canada's high-tech wasn't doing that well. Now, it is, it's a world leader in many, many different areas, and next month, we'll have the great joy of going on the public road with a driverless vehicle for the first time in Canada, and that's because of the technology that we have in that area. So, I'd like to sort of talk about, let's So I'd like to sort of talk about, let's get going now with Phase 3. We need Phase 3 because we are going to, well, we already need it, but we have to try to be, so we have a seamless transfer as we're doing from 1 to 2, when we get out through this area from 2 to 3. And that, of course, is a really big challenge for the finance. So, Mr. Mayor, what I'm asking is that we actually set up a little group, yourself, the three of us from the area, Counselor Cadri, Counselor Hubley, and myself, that are the urban areas in the transit area outside the Greenbelt, and we start strategizing about how we could get the funding to do this. The technical part can be done. The EA is shortly going to be finished, and we'll know the route, we'll know the approximate costing within the next few months. And if we start now, it takes a long time, as you know, to get these funding arrangements done, to find out where we could do it, what we have to amend, amend and change around to get that funding. And if we start now, I think we'd do a much better job. So I'm just asking if you'd be prepared to work with us and start that process now with the community so that we can, in fact, make it much earlier than now. Because at the moment, there's no date, there's no timing, we don't know, and the community is constantly asking about it. This way, I think we can give them some certainty that at least we're working very hard to make it happen.
Yeah, just, I just wanted to clarify, though. The EA, I believe, is going to take at least a year, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Swale.
The EA for the Canada extension will take into next year. That's, that's right.
So I, I'm happy to work with you, Counselor, but I just think we need to follow the process we all agreed to a few months ago, and that was to go out and seek the funding for the EA. And we thank you and Counselors Hubley and Cadri and El Shantiri and Karen McCrimmon who delivered big time for us. That will determine the most appropriate route, more precise costing, but there's no, nothing stopping us from working together to continue to lobby the other levels of government to secure funding. But as you know, that would have to be, at this stage, a 50-50 cost sharing with the two other orders of government because we don't have it in our affordability plan.
That's why I want us to start working right now, Mr. Mayor, because I think that may or may not happen. And we have to also take, really search hard to see if it has to be a 1/3rd, 1/3rd, 1/3rd. What can we do? That doesn't require having it all finished. The last public meeting on the EA will be next month. And at that point, they will put forward their recommended route, they will be put forward their estimated original costing, and they will fine-tune that over the next year. But we'll have some basic information pretty soon.
Yeah, I think I'd better get a clarification because my understanding is we're not going to have that detailed information in a month. It's going to be a year, Mr. Swale?
It will be. We're tracking for the, or the transportation planning folks are tracking for the end of 2018 to finish the EA for the Canada West extension. The piece that we took on to accelerate was the extension from Bayshore to Moody, which we are planning on filing by the end of October, early November, and hoping to get approval from the ministry by the end of this year.
I'm not looking at that level of detail right now, but the detail I'm looking at is just how can we explore our own financial plan to see what we can do there to release funds, what we can do with that, which doesn't, in fact, make any commitments. It's really, really just searching right now. Because I think that, I looked at how long it's taken us to arrange funding and all the work that's been done in Phases 1 and 2, which has been incredibly lot, that, and it may be things like a long time away, but they're supposed to be finishing Phase 2 in 2023 or 2024. And when you start looking at that, what the time has taken for the rest of it, because I started working on this file in 2006, the original plan for where the route would go was done in that term of council, and this is the third term of councils, I've been working on it. So it does take a lot of time. And I just want to make sure that before I leave council, which I may do sometime, that we have things moving forward. So I just think getting started doesn't hurt. We are going to be meeting together, Mr. Mayor, the west end councillors, and we'll start the raw ruling that way and then get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your help on that. Counselor Leeper, please.
Thank you, Mayor. With respect to the governance portion of this report, I just want to get some comfort around some of the new delegated authorities. In, and sorry, I've noted it, in December 2013, when we were doing some governance changes, we made the change such that any changes to designs as approved by city council in December 2012 requires concurrence from the mayor and ward councillor. In the report that's before us, the ESC is going to have a mandate around making design changes, substantial design changes. I want to ensure that the ward council and the mayor are still going to have that concurrence function for any substantial design changes moving forward.
Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
Okay, that's, that's good. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Counselor Leeper. Counselor Newsbaum, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also had just a couple of questions on the governance portion. I think they're pretty straightforward, but on page 29 of the report, one of the bullets of increased delegated authority for the ESC, and I'm reading from the report here, is increased project funding outside of approved funds. I just wasn't entirely clear what approved funds means. So that means within the project budget, shifting things that had been itemized, but all within the project budget, is that correct?
I think, Mr. Mayor, this is, this is actually, the way it's written makes it present a different perception, but in fact, it's within the approved budget, which includes the contingency fund. So it's not outside what council approves.
Okay, and then similarly, the second bullet, design changes requiring funding outside of the existing delegated authority. So similarly, that would be within the context of the existing project budget. And I guess my only question, because it didn't come out clearly in the report, is the rationale for that. Was it deemed too complex to go through Fedco and council? Is there a timeliness issue? I'm just curious what the rationale is.
Mr. Mayor, in the report back in November 26, 2013, the, the report basically outlined a number of factors, five factors, that were taken into consideration for the delegated authority. And one of the main considerations was the timeliness of the project. It is a project management structure. It is a complex project. We are meeting weekly and ensuring that we're on top of the project. And we have checks and balances built in to report back to council and ensure that we stay within our budget. And if we do have to go outside that, we do come back to council. But the primary reason is that decisions on any changes within the scope that, and budget that council approved can be dealt with in a timely manner and not be, not be delayed due to some of the legislative processes that we have in place.
Okay, thank you for that answer. And I presume that granting this delegated authority, this additional delegate authority sought, does not preclude, in fact, one would still anticipate seeing reports on what occurred in a timely fashion. So let's say a decision needs to be made by X date, it's made, I presume within a short time thereafter, particularly if it does involve significant changes or significant expenditures of the contingency fund, that Fedco and council would be told about that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, currently you receive quarterly reports, those will continue. And those encapsulate all of those decisions, including the summary on the contingency fund and major decision points that you've seen in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Deans, please.
And I want to start by thanking Mr. Manconi for answering my specific questions around delegated authority. Because what concerns me in this report is that we're asking for more and more delegated authority to staff. This is the largest project in the city's history. I've been here long enough to remember the Shirelli line that ultimately got cancelled, but I remember how council was seized with that project. And really, every step of the way had a pretty hands-on approach to understanding the decisions that were being made along the line and why they were being made. And I feel that the pendulum has swung so far in the other direction now. I mean, that might have been excessive, but this is, in my opinion, also excessive, that really, we're narrowing the scope, we're taking away Infrastructure Ontario, we're concentrating in the hands of a very few people in this city, a lot of delegated authority, including the delegated authority for the contingency of $100 million. And I just think that council shouldn't be delegating all that authority to staff. I think that it's reasonable that if there are to be changes along the way, that it come back to council, come back to Fedco, come back to transportation, come back to transit, whatever it is, in a timely fashion so that council is made aware and has the decision, not a delegated authority, to, to a staff body. And for me, you know, this is the largest project, billions of dollars, and there's two pages dedicated to process and delegation of authority in this. And I just, to me, it, it doesn't make sense. I don't, I, I don't think that we should say, here, here's $2.1 billion, let us know when we can cut a ribbon. I think the council needs to be much more engaged than we are, and I think that it's somewhat irresponsible to just delegate all of the authority for all the decision-making to staff. And so, Mr. Mayor, for that reason, I would like to ask that recommendation number four about approving the Stage 2 governance plan be separated out so that I could vote against that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on the item? I'll offer a couple of comments. First of all, thanks to our staff. Our staff have been working on this particular project for some time now and have done, I believe, a very good job of keeping us informed, keeping the public informed, attending many public consultation meetings. And I want to thank our city manager, Steve Canellakis, John Manconi, Chris Swale, their respective teams. Also, our three colleagues who worked on the 100-day solution, councilors Egli, Blay, and Taylor.
I'd like to thank city staff that works very hard to make Phase 2 move forward. It's a very important project that will transform the economy of our city.
To note that all parts of our city will benefit from the expedited procurement of Stage 2 LRT as we bring LRT farther east to Trim Road, farther south to Riverside South, farther west to Algonquin College and to Moody Drive now, and in fact, farther in all directions than had been thought possible at the outset. There's no doubt in my mind that these investments being made collectively with our provincial and federal partners, and as you can imagine, a lot of meetings and time and effort went into those meetings, both at the political and the bureaucratic level, but it was a signal of confidence that we were one of, I believe, only two projects that received a preapproval on Stage 2 funding of the infrastructure program in all of Canada. And that, I think, is something we can be very, very proud of because we know that it's, this program, this project of LRT, will help to contribute to the growing confidence that individuals, families, businesses, and organizations are feeling about our future. With well over $5 billion in LRT infrastructure work planned or underway in the city, it's no wonder that families are purchasing homes in greater numbers and planning for prosperous future here in the nation's capital. And also, business confidence, as you see with the Ottawa Chamber of Commerce, is on the rise. With today's approval in hand, staff can now continue to advance the procurement for both the Confederation Line and the Trillium Line extensions.
Over the next few months, city staff will work very hard to launch the call for tender for the Phase 2 of the light rail.
A mistake. There are still lots of challenges ahead. When you're building a train system in a built-up part of a community, there are always going to be disruptions and challenges to the neighborhood. And we've seen that in Phase 1, and we will see it again in Phase 2. But at the same time, I believe the staff have gone above and beyond to ensure that disruptions and inconveniences and challenges to neighborhoods are met with sensible and affordable solutions. So these procurements are both innovative and groundbreaking and will serve as a model for jurisdictions here in Canada and around the world. And I think anyone who receives some of the kinds of publications, and I have the honor of receiving Infrastructure Canada's publication, they showcase our LRT project very frequently, which is something I think we can all be very proud of. So staff will continue the important work of preparing the evaluation criteria and process to ensure a robust, fair, and competitive procurement process and to see that the City of Ottawa receives excellent overall value with this historic investment. And as Counselor Wilkinson and other west end councillors have been pushing for farther west option, we are going through with the EA, and I mentioned Karen McCrimmon's involvement, which was very helpful. We also want to go over the Prince of Wales Bridge, you know, the O train to the, to the Tache Rapid Bus system is something that Mayor Penno Jobe and I have discussed, and he's supportive. And obviously, that is another project that is on the horizon. Should we secure funding sooner, we can have the train going over there sooner as well. So I'm very much looking forward to moving into this next exciting step in the second half of 2018, when we expect the successful proponents to be presented to council for approval on both of those projects, both Confederation and Trillium Line. And I thank members of council very much for their support, continued support of this amazing city-building opportunity. So I'd like to call yays and nays on the whole report, and if someone would like to dissent, I believe Counselor Deans would like to dissent on number four. So on the main report, yays and nays, please.
How are we supposed to dissent on part of it?
Well, you do that right now, just as Counselor Deans did.
Okay, so you're, you're actually taking each of the seven recommendations as one?
Yes, and then you can dissent on a particular one if you'd like to after. Okay, so on the whole report.
Counselor Moffett?
Yes.
Counselor Hubley?
Yes.
Counselor Newsbaum?
Yes.
Counselor McKenney?
Yes.
Counselor Brockington?
Yes.
Counselor Cadri?
Yes.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Yes.
Counselor Deans?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Harder?
Yes.
Conseil Cloutier?
Oui.
Counselor Chernyschenko?
Oui.
Counselor El Shantiri?
Yes.
Counselor Blay?
Yes.
Counselor Leeper? Counselor Midic?
Oui.
Conseil Fleury?
Oui.
Counselor DeRusse?
Yes.
Counselor Kakish?
Yes.
Conseil Monnet?
Oui.
Counselor Egli?
Yes.
Counselor Shirelli?
Yes, dissent on four.
Counselor Tierney? Mayor Watson?
Yes.
22 yays with noted dissents.
So Counselor Deans and Shirelli's dissent on four is noted. Next, thank you very much, traffic and parking bylaw update 2017. I believe Counselor Deans had asked for this to be held.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a fulsome discussion on this at committee, and I thank the staff for the work they've done on this, especially, I had asked that we do public consultation because that hadn't been a part of the original plan, and almost 2,000 people responded. So I think that is indicative of the interest that the public have in transportation and in parking issues in our city in particular. But between the committee meeting and council, I started to receive a number of messages from residents in the Hunkelman Park community that are very concerned about the establishment of large-scale Airbnbs in their neighborhoods. And they're concerned in particular that if we are to pass a more relaxed parking bylaw on weekends, that it might actually facilitate in some way the establishment of large-scale Airbnbs, things that are attracting sports teams and what have you. And the community that I represent, they feel very much as though these are mini hotels that are being established in residential areas. And you'll recall that I asked in June for a report back on the planning tools that we might have to address this. But when it comes to parking, I just wanted to specifically ask staff if we have looked at the impact of relaxing this regulation on Airbnbs.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, we haven't looked at specifically with Airbnb, but what I can say is if there's a community that, that has concerns with people parking more than four, five, six hours on the weekend, they can do through our regular process a petition, and we would sign it as a three-hour, two-hour, or one-hour parking based on what the community would want.
Okay, and can you just remind me of what that process is to petition?
Basically, the, the proponent, the resident who lives on the street, would contact the city. We would provide them with a petition with all the addresses on that street, would also say what the parking request was, so if it was for three-hour parking on the weekends. And then they would go out and survey the residents, and if we get 66% approval, then we would, and concurrence from the councillor, we would then implement that change to the parking regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Fleury, please. Councillor Fleury, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I also missed a committee meeting a few days ago, as you know. My question is not as much as the six-hour limit, that's not an issue with me. But recently, with the regulations that we have in place, when we raised it, a lot of people from the law enforcement say that there's not a lot of sensitivity as to the bike lanes and the road itself. And there's regulations that don't allow us to have both unless there's a physical barrier. So could you comment on that? Because there were many situations that you are aware of that have created a lot of tension towards bikers or residents or businesses where we could find a common solution if the regulation is changed. We haven't changed the regulation. So right now, you can park at 1570s from the sidewalk, or if there's no sidewalk, it could be from the side of the road. So we haven't changed the regulation. What you're talking about, I think, is bike lanes where you can park a meter or a meter and a half from the road. This is more of a problem. We've seen that on Laurier, where there's only paint used, and cars are blocking the bike lanes. So we need that sort of border to make sure that people stay on the right side and do not block the bike lanes. Obviously, I think there's a domino effect because as soon as you ask for a border, that zone has to be maintained during the winter. So that's not really a solution. So maybe you could take a direction, that is, to make a decision internally because it's very tiring to try and manage that. We tried to please residents, but the bureaucratic solution is not efficient. Yes, we're working with our colleagues in order to find a solution. We've had a meeting over quite a few days in order to put in place what residents want on their street. So you're confirming that you will make the proper analysis internally? Yes, we'll be working with the road department. And you'll provide a report to the Transportation Committee? That's the instruction that we need. I'm sorry I didn't get that. If this is council's instruction or direction, this is what we'll do. So I would like to have a summary of what will have been found as a solution.
Report, I don't know how much work that's going to take to put it all together.
Yeah, we'll have to go back and take a look in terms from that perspective, but I mean, we can also meet with-
Well, why don't you take another advisement and then get back to the councillor? You know, I don't want to have another, you know, sometimes it's easy for us to ask staff to do something, but it's, they have a work plan, and they're probably overworked with the work plan. So why don't we ask that as a-
Just one point, Mr. Mayor. I agree with you, but the staff are already announcing that they're conducting an internal review. I just want the summary of that review to be shared with members of transportation.
So is that possible? Are you doing the review internally in any event?
Well, we are, we are working with our road services groups to formalize something so that as we move forward. So it's something that maybe we can bring back through memo to council if that's direction.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Merci, conseiller. Councillor Hubley, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I ask my question, I just want to talk about something Mr. Landry mentioned in his response to councillor Deans about the petition process. I can share with my colleagues that I've done that process a number of times in my community. It's worked well. The majority of the residents really like it. It's not that time-consuming, and you end up getting a much better product out of it because Mr. Landry's staff can recommend exactly how to sign a street so that you still get good on-street spots, but you don't get the bottlenecks that you do today when cars are parking on corners, et cetera. So I just want to share that. And now I want to ask my question, which is, should we also be looking at, before we tabled a draft budget, should we be looking at adding some more parking control officers into this, in the city as well? Because part of the issue here is the number of complaints being received for parking infringements. So along with the long-term solution of your exercise with the petition and everything, I'm just wondering, Mr. Mayor, if it'd be a good direction to staff to take a review at the staffing levels as well, the full and part-time officers, and see if we need a few more?
Yeah, I'm not sure how popular that will be with the public, but can you take that and go back to see if there's a need? I don't want to add more if there's no need for it, maybe-
Mayor, we're doing other work with regards to that, with regards to where volumes are and how we can better deploy the assets we have. So with the work that's being done, we'll take that as part of the analysis, too. Currently, we're identifying, perhaps we're investing in areas we can reinvest some, I think maybe with the current resources, we may be able to address what the councillor wants and be more effective. So I'm looking forward to hear what they have to do, the work they're doing.
In the suburbs, Mr. Mayor, we get a lot more calls and letters complaining that there's not enough parking control. I've never got an email saying that we're at the right level. So I think it's worth a look as part of the budget exercise, so I agree with what Mr. Landry says.
That's a fair compromise.
Yeah, agreed.
I know I get mostly letters with people photocopying their tickets to me, so they're not happy with getting a ticket, so.
Think of it as a sin tax, okay?
Okay, thank you, councillor Hubley. Councillor Chernoshenko?
Thank you very much. I did express some reservations when we debated this at committee because a couple of particular situations, of course, in Capital Ward. Lansdowne won't be news to anyone. We had a very comprehensive plan. We had consultants' recommendations and council-approved plans around Lansdowne, and never at that time was it envisioned that some of the streets within proximity of Lansdowne, the Glebe Old Ottawa South, and now with the new bridge construction just starting to Old Ottawa East, will be an easy-walking distance. And that's a whole area that will now, on weekends and holidays, be six-hour parking times, which is enough that both long-term visitors and employees may start using those streets as their preferred parking spot. That has a number of problems to come with it. One, of course, is that residents there will find it even more difficult to find parking when it's already very difficult. Another is it might actually be an enticement to people now choosing to drive, whereas they had taken us up on our encouragement to be using transit, and they may feel now that, well, hey, I can park for up to six hours, why not do that? And the third one, of course, is that we often find that our two-city parking garages around Lansdowne are underwhelmed, and so that would be even more the case, where there would be lost revenue in the parking garages and more people circling, competing for those spaces. What I'm getting to, this is all sort of somewhat known. I really saw this proposal initially as being something that I had heard suburban councillors were asking for, and I saw that that's what people are asking for, had no problem with that. It was only later that I realized, thought through the implications here, not just for Lansdowne, I would say, around Brewer Park, around Tennis Club, and others where Carlton University. My question for you then is around petitioning. It can be time-intensive, it can be particularly time-intensive if you have quite a number of streets that now find themselves with the possibility of becoming six-hour zones. And that could be as many as 15, 20, or 30 streets just in the circumference of easy-walking distance of Lansdowne. That's a lot of staff time, that's a lot of people you're giving address lists and saying, fill your boots, go out, talk to your 80 neighbors, and come back with signatures. What I'm wondering is, if there are entire zones where we know there's an issue, or we've got the studies with Lansdowne traffic, where we might actually do it on a zone basis and a councillor bring a motion to say, based on this knowledge, can we do multiple streets with a clear rationale for that, as opposed to requiring a street-by-street petition?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. With the, we just, back in June, I believe it was, there was a report that was approved on the petition process, and there it looked at street-by-street because there might be requirements from one street versus another. If there was a zone, we would, we'd recommend that maybe a report to committee would be brought forward from the councillors, saying that there's an area that, you know, there's a desire based on the community that you could bring, that you'd want to make that change for that. So that would be our recommendation, because the policy as it is today doesn't talk to zones, it just talks to streets.
And thank you, and I suppose that's how I would try to approach it then, is to work with staff to identify, you know, here's a circumference, here are the streets within it and the known behavior, and come forward with a report for committee and council to approve. Because it isn't just game time we're talking about, this is, I mean, we're trying to get people to come to Lansdowne all the time, all weekend long, for all sorts of things, but recognizing the limited capacity of the streets and our own policies, we're also trying to get as many as possible to use transit to do that. So I hate to have one policy change undermine many of the very good efforts and what we've achieved. So I guess I will continue to vote for it with reservations and likely will be working with staff to see what the rollout has meant for some of the streets, particularly around Lansdowne. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Chernoshenko. Councillor Brockington, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I certainly will be supporting this. It's not just a suburban issue. There are plenty of requests in the past and concerns from residents who have very legitimate needs. They're hosting family and friends on weekends, and it's hard to accommodate all cars in one laneway in three hours, according to some residents, is unreasonable. So I do think this is about balance, balancing the needs that exist with a reasonable extension. And it's weekends and, I believe, stat holidays. So if concerns are raised locally, like councillor Deans has raised, then locally you can address that, and we do that now. We do that now in our wards where residents want parking changes or speed changes. As Mr. Landry stated, you can petition it, and you can engage your community and have a made-in-your-own-ward solution. So if the six-hour limit poses localized issues in my ward, we'll deal with it locally and come up with a River Ward solution for those areas. Just a few questions. First of all, the start date is June 1st, 2018. Why is that so far from now?
I believe it's because the, it needs to go through the province, and the province has to approve it. So there's a process that takes between six and eight months to get that certified.
Okay. And just to piggyback on comments that councillor Hubley made, rather than say we need more officers, my question to the bylaw department would be, you know, once this goes into force or even the lead-up, how do you plan to monitor and enforce this? I think the issue at committee was that if an officer's shift is approximately seven hours, it may be difficult for the same officer to mark tires within the first half an hour of her shift, and then within the last half an hour of her shift actually issue tickets. So to the GM of Protective Services, I'm just saying that monitoring is important. We need to have an understanding how, within the six hours, if there are infractions, this will be monitored given an officer's shift. Can you comment on that now? Yes, Mayor. As a result of the change, staff are currently looking, and that was part of the earlier answer, we're looking at the whole model with regards to how we're going to enforce because of shift hours and changes, et cetera. But we're already seeing there are ways, but we're going to have to readjust our model. So both from a resourcing perspective and the way we do our enforcement, there's going to be necessary changes, but we don't think that's, that is a hindrance to the policy you want to put in place. It's just up to us to readapt the model in which we enforce. So before June 1st, would you commit to just informing the community in Protective Services how you're going to do that? Yes, Mayor, I can do that. Great. My last question is, and this may seem odd, but there's some confusion in the public about what a statutory holiday is, certainly some of the big ones, there are no dispute. But I'm concerned that there may be confusion on certain holidays which aren't deemed statutory that people may or may not get a ticket on. Are we going to have any type of communique like we do when there's an on-street parking ban for snow removal, where that's well communicated by the city? Tonight, you're not allowed to park because we'll be clearing snow. Will there be any type of communication where this coming holiday is deemed statutory and members of the public can park for up to six hours? Maybe we haven't got that far yet, but I just, I don't want people to be getting tickets because they thought it was a holiday when in fact it isn't. Mayor, that sounds absolutely reasonable. I'll look into that. Great. Like I said, Mr. Mayor, I will be supporting this. I think this is a good balance.
Yeah, would it, just to follow up on councillor Brockington's point, would it make sense just to simply say, recognize holidays? Because I think Family Day is not a stat holiday, but Christmas is. Maybe you can look into that. I know it says it here in the, I believe in the report, it says statutory, but I think councillor Brockington brings up a good point. If people have, some people have Family Day off, they think that's a statutory holiday, and I don't want us, you know, getting into that confusion where people are being ticketed. It's like, you know, I often get asked, you know, do we pay for parking on this particular day or not? Do you have any suggestions?
Just to address, absolutely, the 12 stats are defined in the bylaws, so it's a communications issue. We'll take that away to make sure that's clearly communicated to the public.
Great, thank you. Thanks, councillor Brockington. Councillor, conseiller Manette, s'il vous plaît.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Being the councillor who brought the suggestion forward to review this issue and the suggestion of six hours as a potential option for the weekends and stats holidays, I'm very pleased with the comments that were received at Transportation Committee. It seemed like every community were, in general, in favor of it. It does not change the aspect during the week, during the week, five days a week. It will remain three-hour parking unless it's stated otherwise. I agree with councillor Chernoshenko for the ward that he represents. It is a different type of ward that has many special events, and something needs to be looked at for a zone consideration, especially when the special events are in effect, which would be red-box games, soccer games, 67 games. During 2017, we had major events almost every Sunday at Lansdowne. So, you know, it's something that really needs to be looked at in a ward like councillor Chernoshenko. Stats holidays, I also agree that a clear definition needs to be outlined so that no confusion is there on behalf of the general public. But I'll tell you, when it comes to Christmas time, Easter, you know, any major holiday, the residents will appreciate being able to visit their parents or families and not, without the fear of having to move their vehicles every three hours. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Merci, conseiller. Anyone else like to speak to the item? So on the report that's before us, carried. Disposition of items approved by committee under delegated authority. Received. Motion to adopt reports. Councillor Hubley, second by councillor Kakish, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That the report from the Manitick Mill Quarter Community Development Corporation entitled the Manitick Mill Quarter Community Development Corporation 2016 Annual Report, and the Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee Report Number 27, Community and Protective Services Committee Report Number 25, FedCo Report Number 27, and Planning Committee Reports 49A and 50, and that the Transportation Committee Report Number 26 be received and adopted as amended. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
On the motion by councillor Hubley, carried, adoptee. Motions of which notice have been previously given. Councillor Egli, second by councillor Blay. Councillor Egli, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If the motion could go up on the screen for everybody to see, please. Thank you very much. This is more procedural than anything else. I'll just jump to the, be resolved, if you will. And as we introduced last week, what we, councillor Boy and I are asking council to do is delegate authority to yourself, the city court consistor, to finalize next few payment and transfer agreements with the province and chair for the PTF fund and the Clean Water and Waste Water Fund, as set out in the motion, and therefore also designate- designating the manager of asset management as the city's authorized representative for all other administrative purposes of the agreement and such delegation, not extend established delegation of authority for changes, additions, or deletions to the list of projects previously approved by council. So it's really, the motion is to facilitate the projects going forward, get all the paperwork signed, sign off on all the various approvals and agreements. So I'd ask everybody to support it.
Great. On the motion, carried, adopté. Motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. Motion by Councillor Brockington, seconded by myself. It's time-sensitive, obviously, because of the natural disasters in the south, on suspension of the rules. Carried. Councillor Brockington, if you'd like to introduce it, please.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, members of council, for allowing this to come on this morning. Certainly, we've all seen media reports and the coverage of the two recent hurricanes that have impacted the Caribbean and parts of the United States. The destruction is beyond words. The motion here today, first of all, extends the sympathies by council to those affected by both Hurricanes Harvey and Irma. And I think it's wise that we encourage residents and businesses in our city to donate to a charity of their choice that's committed to these types of disasters. I was really struck when I saw particularly the island of Barbuda. That was one of the first islands that was impacted. To see that basically every structure on that island has been damaged, many by repair. Certainly, the devastation is widespread. Many nations have been impacted. Many really don't have the means, the financial means or ability to address the immediate needs of their communities. And I think, you know, we have an obligation to be mindful of the needs of others, and if people have the means to contribute to charities like the Red Cross, or Oxfam, World Vision, or Food for the Poor, that they consider doing that if they can. Earlier today, Mr. Mayor and members, the FCM released a statement. I'll just read two brief paragraphs. They say, "FCM stands in solidarity with the people of Haiti, Cuba, and other countries and territories in the Caribbean and the United States, as well as their loved ones in Canada, as they deal with the devastation brought by Hurricane Irma. Over the next weeks, the FCM will continue to monitor situation and offer assistance if required. In this emergency phase, the FCM encourages members wishing to help to donate to the Red Cross." So certainly, there are communities within Canada who are making public statements to their members, to their residents, to businesses. So I would encourage members of council to support this. If you have newsletters, email that you communicate as well to your communities, please ask them to consider donating to a charity of their choice. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councillor Chernyschenko, please.
Yes, thank you. Naturally, I'm supportive of this. I do have one, quibble isn't quite the word, but perhaps addition. Of course, Harvey and Irma got a great deal of attention, and they're closer to us, but the devastation in Bangladesh and India and Nepal has been equal to, or perhaps even greater, unless we have citizens starting to wonder why we're picking out one over the other. It's my assumption that the organizations that are identified here would similarly have programs to direct donations to other zones as well. So I don't really suggest a change to the motion and start adding in every disaster that's happened in the last couple of months. That could be a very long list, but simply to make the point that we are aware as a council that similar disasters are happening elsewhere, and giving what you can to help people in need wherever it may be is something that we encourage. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. On the motion, carried. Thank you, Councillor Brockington. Our next motion requiring suspension of the rules of procedure is by Councillor Chernyschenko, seconded by Councillor Neusbaum. On suspension, carried. Councillor Chernyschenko, please.
Thank you. Very different from hurricanes. We recently imposed an interim control bylaw to help deal with the kind of housing that's having very negative consequences in some communities. Naturally, this being a blunt instrument, it did catch up some applications, people who were well on their way with applications, that we didn't really want to, that were not the type of development that we as councillors or as staff have problems with. So I'm bringing a motion that identifies a property in my ward, as well as in collaboration with Councillor Neusbaum, one in his, where we are exempting two properties from that. Our staff are in agreement, they have agreed that it was really on a technicality and a matter of timing. These are the kinds of renovations, expansions to homes, that are not the target of that bylaw. So therefore, be it resolved, the council repeal bylaw number 2017-245, as it relates to the lands known municipally as 220 Sunnyside Avenue and 45 Druan Avenue.
Carried. Thank you. Any other motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure? Notice the motion for consideration at subsequent meeting. Motion pour exémerre réunion subsequent. None. Motion to introduce bylaws. Motion pour introduction de règlement. Councillor Hubley, seconded by Councillor Kakich, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That the bylaws listed on the agenda under the motion to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed, and that the bylaw entitled, "The Bylaw of the City of Ottawa to repeal bylaw number 2017-245 of the City of Ottawa," entitled, "A Bylaw of the City of Ottawa to establish interim control for lands within Sandy Hill and portions of Old Ottawa East and Overbrook," as it applies to the lands municipally known as 220 Sunnyside Avenue and 45 Druan Avenue, as approved by a motion at this meeting, be read and passed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
On the motion, carried. Confirmation bylaw, please. Councillor Hubley.
That the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of the 13th of September, 2017.
Carried. We have one written inquiry. Councillor Flurry, please.
Merci, Monsieur le Maire. What is the City of Ottawa's responsibility as a service manager designated under the Social Housing Reform Act 2000 by the province, more specifically relating to the management standards, outcomes, tracking, payments, and expectations relating to offering of emergency shelters? And the second point, when was the last time the City of Ottawa conducted procurement relating to the offering of emergency shelter beds? What agreements and contracts are in place with the various providers of emergency shelters? And wondering if this inquiry could be responded prior to the Salvation Army report coming to Planning Committee.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Hubley, adjournment?
The city council meeting of September 13, 2017...